Mayor, Council, Brenda Gunn, City Administrator. I'm not going to go deep into the history of the swimming pool. I think we've talked about that for a long time, at least since 2005, according to my records. Obviously, the pool's nearing 60 years old. We've got a history of the maintenance issues with it, limitations with size, amenities, you know all of that. Over the years, we've done things to address the safety concerns. We've added amenities, we added the slide. Over the course of time, we've gathered a lot of public input about the pool. We've gone through a couple of bond issues that narrowly failed. And we most recently tried to partner with a Nebraska multi-sports group on a public-private partnership related to having both indoor and outdoor swimming capacity. And that has not progressed as quickly as we may need a pool. And with that in mind, you all charged us with coming up with a Plan B option. And so what does that look like? And so that's what we're here tonight to talk about. I guess to start off with, someone came in to talk to the mayor and I tonight, so I guess just to put the public at ease, there's a sense maybe that this is all a done deal and that we've got this all figured out. I just want to say for the record that this is the first time that the council's hearing this presentation. I know that we've, seems like we've been working on this for a long time. If COVID had not have hit, you would have seen this presentation earlier in the spring. So it isn't a done deal, it's not in your budget. This is our opportunity to talk to you about what Plan B could look like. And so with that in mind, one of the things that came up during the public participation processes several times is why can't you just do a pool in its current location? Why doesn't that work? And I'll tell you a couple of things. We've put up this diagram up here, and it's kind of, we call it a bubble diagram. And on kind of the right side of it, you will see what the bubbles near city center. So what's the plaza space where the music venue's going to go? The overlook restrooms, amphitheater, where the fire access, how that comes through. Then in the middle, you see the 84th Street corridor, the big orange line that goes through. You can see where the bridge will be, the underpass. And then that connects to the other side. There'll be a pedestrian walkway, underpass there that gets us to the other side where the pool currently is. So as you recall, this summer, we had planned to relocate the Salute to Summer Festival. So with the development that has happened in city center, we were required to put in a fire access that goes through the park. So our traditional salute to summer carnival, we weren't able to do that there anymore. And so with the fire lane access, the fire access road, it really limits what things that you can do in that portion of the park where we had the carnival before. So that's why we were looking to do something different for the next couple of years till we found a new spot for it. So as you look at this bubble diagram, what I would say why the pool to be relocated in its current spot, it really limits what opportunities you have for future events and festivals that may have good synergies with the things that are happening in city center. With that pedestrian access, you could have opportunities on that site to do things like put a carnival or have big festivals. You know, I think there's a lot of things that we've brainstormed and things that we have yet to brainstorm about what your possibilities are. If you tried to put the swimming pool in there, that would take up about 37% of your space on that side for a use that you will only use three months of the year. Potentially, you could have that programmed for other things many more months. So in thinking about why it doesn't fit, may not be the best choice to put it where it's at, that was sort of the thinking of that. Yes, you could do it, but it really limits your options for future activities and events, which in past surveys, we recently did the Community Interest and Opinion Survey, people have said they want to see the city of La Vista have more activities, more events, more festivals, those kinds of things. This is your space where you could do that. The current location, the Central Park area, you would not be able to do those kinds of things simply because of the fire lane access. You have to be more deliberate about what you can do in there and where you put it. It doesn't offer that flexibility. So why Central Park? One of the things that we've talked about over the years as we've talked about the pool is people always like the idea of the central location of it, not being at one end of the community or the other. And I realize that when we were looking at the potential of the indoor/outdoor with multi-sport, that would have put it at one end of the community. You know, I think that was always part of the discussion, and I recall council talking about, we're going to need to figure out how to get people out there. That was always a bit of a concern about having that on a far end. But the central heart of La Vista, we're pretty limited on space. So it's central, you own the land, and you're not, by doing it in that portion of the park, you're not limiting other uses in the park. That would occupy about 17% of that area, and you would still be able to use it for other things. So that's why we're throwing this out as an option to consider. What you'll hear tonight are how, you'll hear about how a pool in this location could look and how it could take shape. When we started talking about it, we actually didn't know if it was possible. There's the pipeline that goes through there, there's some other, you know, just trying to figure out logistically would a pool work there. That's what we asked the group to look at. So tonight, we've got representatives Jeff Bartley and Lauren Osborne from Waters Edge and Bruce Niedermeyer, who you are familiar with, he's done a lot of, he works for RDG. They've done a lot of the planning work in the park for us. So you'll get to hear from them, and they can walk you through the particulars. But I kind of just wanted to hit this off on why we aren't showing this as going in on the west side. Doesn't mean that you couldn't do that, but from a planning perspective, keeping your options open about things that you might be able to do there that you don't have other places in town right now to do, that's why we went offsite and looked to try to do it somewhere else. So with that, I would see if you have any questions of me before I turn it over to them, and they'll let you see the fun stuff.
Brenda?
Yes.
On special events, I think we hold a lot of lake.
You know, I think you will. I think there will be special events there. But I think that the kinds and types of like to do a carnival, you probably need a flat space to be able to make it work better for the rides and things. I think that you will program the whole area. Ultimately, to get the best bang out of your buck, you need spaces in different places to move people in and around. But that nice flat space to me for carnivals and things where you need to maybe be bringing equipment or like trucks, you're probably, it would be different than in the lake area. But I think you'll do things around the lake. I think you'll do lots of things around the lake, but different.
Well, I'll be asked what kind of tournament, certainly, a carnival, and so the pool, what do we need in the right location?
Totally understand.
You know, a carnival's two and a half days, maybe, so nobody can.
Sure.
Any other questions, Brenda, before we go to the council? Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Jeff Bartley with Waters Edge Quack Design. I'm an engineer with them. And we're a planning and design firm that designs swimming pools and aquatic centers for communities like you across the country. And again, as Brenda said, with me, I have Lauren Osborne, who is an operations analyst for our firm, and I have Bruce Niedermeyer, who's a landscape architect. So we are sharing with you some slides or a presentation that shares the result of where we are with the study at this point. I will say that the study was a collaboration with a consultant team and a number of city staff members. The consultant team included, again, Waters Edge and RDG, but also included locally tech architects for building planning and TD2 Engineering for Site Civil Design. The scope of the study was to determine what this new swimming pool might look like, how it might fit the site, how it'd be configured, also to do a public input process to get feedback, input from your citizens, and then develop a concept plan that would fit the city of La Vista, along with the capital cost to build it, and also the operational costs, projections, and revenue that you would have by operating it.
Mayor, Council, again, my name's Lauren. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm going to walk through the preliminary steps that we went through on this study, and we're going to begin with your market analysis. So with any project, with any facility, we want to understand your market. And so we did study your population. We want to make sure that the population in La Vista supports the type of facility we're looking at. And when we look at facilities and we look at your new facility, we want to know what is a typical type of sizing that is appropriate for your community. And when we look at communities similar to yours, there is a range, all right? And so those ranges go from .25 square feet of water per capita up to .75 per capita. And this starts to frame for us a type of facility size that is appropriate for you. For La Vista, when we are going through this exercise, we determined that about .5 square feet of water service per capita is appropriate for you, which ends up being about 8,500 square feet. When we look at this number, we want to marry it with your budget goals, and we also want to marry it with the goal of the project team and the community, that this facility will serve a community, your community, the La Vista community, and not necessarily a destinational water park. So we marry the typical size or expected size with the budget and also with the goal of serving the community of La Vista. Moving past that, we want to understand what are some of the competitive facilities around you? Where else might people be going? What can your community expect in a new facility such as the new La Vista swimming pool? There are 19 area outdoor aquatic facilities here in the La Vista market, seven of which are more modern. So we look at those more modern and newer facilities to get a gauge of, again, what might your community be expecting in a new swimming pool? So looking at those market facilities, we identified some features or amenities that your community would be expecting. A zero-depth entry is one of them, lap lanes, diving. Water slides are example of amenities that we could expect your community to anticipate. Moving past that, we want to understand what type of amenities would be distinctive to you, amenities that might be different or new for your community that will not only bring your community members to your facility, but also keep them coming time after time. And a few of those distinctive amenities include a current channel, wet deck, or extra spray features, an interactive play structure, and more enhanced lounge spaces for people to relax and enjoy the facility. As a project team, we have done several different public engagement activities, and we have several methods that we instituted for this in order to get inclusive community feedback from La Vista residents. We did hold two open public meetings. There was a meeting with the Central Park neighborhood and the adjacent neighbors to Central Park, in addition to an online survey that was available. I'm just going to summarize some of the key takeaways from all of those different methods. And some of those key takeaways include, there is support for a new swimming pool here in La Vista, there is support for a pool to be located in Central Park, but there are some concerns coming from the adjacent neighbors at the Central Park location. Additionally, the use, or sorry, the cost or fees to utilize the facility were very important, and we did take those into consideration when we were developing the concept and also developing the operational plan, which we'll talk about here in just a little bit. Fun features and amenities were also very important when people are choosing where they are going to go swim. And when we think about that, that does directly tie into your cost recovery and what we can expect for revenues. So again, these are types of things that are important to us. And another key takeaway going through your public engagement is that there is a high desire and a high need for your new swimming pool to have different types of areas, different types of depths, that can service your entire demographic, from your little ones all the way up to your more experienced swimmers. And that is important for us when we start to put together your concept and we are looking at features and how people may utilize your facility. In your packet that you have and also up on the screen, we do identify some of the features that fit this theme, and you're going to see these features here in a little bit when we talk, when we show you the concept. I'll take this. So for Central Park, the first step in looking at the site is, does the site work? Are there items about the site or characteristics about the site that make it appealing for a public swimming pool? And we did find a few things that make it appealing for a public outdoor swimming pool. And that includes being surrounded by residential properties around the site, there is easy pedestrian and vehicular access to and from the site, there's recreational synergy, meaning there are other activities to be done in the park and around the park. Those are types of uses that we would be looking for for facilities such as your new swimming pool. The connectivity between Central Park and Civic Center Park, that kind of connectivity is something we would be looking for, again, just for ease of pedestrian access to and from two different locations, and also access to utilities is here as well.
So a significant part of the study was studying Central Park and determining how well or not it might fit the new swimming pool. So we studied the site, the configuration, the size of it, what features are already there, perhaps like the parking roads or parking. And then obviously, on this site, there's an easement that runs through it for the gas line, which is a substantial part or a significant part of that park. And this is kind of a perspective, bird's eye view, looking down on the park, and it shows when we are analyzing this site where we thought the swimming pool might fit best. And it's at kind of the base of the hill at the park, down kind of at the base of where the trees are, and this shows that location where we were looking. So then in further developing the concept plan, we took an overall look at the site, and Bruce was instrumental in that. I'll let him share this.
Thank you. As noted by Brenda earlier, the Civic Center Park and Central Park master plan was something to keep in mind during this entire process, to make sure that we weren't thinking in a silo about just the swimming pool, but about future improvements holistically. So this plan is basically a bit of an amendment to previous master planning efforts to make sure that we're thinking about the future improvements of Thompson Creek with restoration projects, future realignment of the park drive to get it out of the Magellan easement, because as you can imagine, that's not really preferred, and the inclusion of updated shelter and restroom facilities that serve the park as well as new playground equipment. If we think about on the north end of Central Park, there is also a vehicular road access, the park drive access to Parkview Boulevard shown on that, which is consistent with the 2012 master plan for the entire park spaces as well. And that is one thing to make us not have a dead end in a park space, which often allows for kind of congregating that's hard to see from the perimeter, keeps things a bit safer when people can see holistically through that area, as well as providing better access for the fire lane and safety equipment that Brenda mentioned earlier as well. We are all familiar with those shelters and amenities down there that are aging fairly rapidly at this point, the restrooms and shelters themselves. So this plan also incorporates updates to those facilities to make sure they're serving the park users well. It also maintains the tennis courts on site. There was a lot of valuable feedback that those tennis courts are valued by the residents, both close by and from a distance. So keeping that and allowing it to be integrated with the site was very important. Paired with that update to the master plan were a number of concerns that were brought up during the process, and we want to address those as well. So one concern was a potential for increased traffic into the park. So yes, having a swimming pool would cause more people to drive there to access that swimming pool when it is open. But again, in making improvements to the drive and the parking in ways that are cognizant of a better holistic park, we can have connections through and make sure that traffic stays calm when it is in the park as well. Concern about the park changing from a passive park in its current condition. Largely, all those passive features are staying the same. The tennis is still available, the trails through the trees, as many mature tree canopy trees as can be saved will be saved. There is no intent to go plowing down all the trees of Central Park because that is one of the elements that makes it most successful. So keeping those elements that make it a successful passive park and improving on those things like the shelters, as I mentioned, are key parts of this process. So a concern about large parking lot, this is, we looked at this a couple of different ways. One of them was to not oversize the parking. So what the parking lot does is it's appropriately sized for your day-to-day users. It's not appropriately sized for a huge event that's going to be drawing people from all extensive La Vista and Ralston and the Billion elsewhere. So thinking about that, and then using the parking that's within the park already, so parking that is along the park drive to supplement the parking lot itself is very important, and then keeping that tennis court parking that serves the tennis court as well. And then thinking about how that parking lot looks. It's not just a sea of concrete, but it's proposed as with a large green island in the middle with tree plantings, tree plantings on both sides as a buffer, so it doesn't look like you're outside of a big box store. It's integrated into the park design itself. And lastly, concerns with ruining the view into the park space specifically from residents adjacent to the site and increased noise. So we've been very cognizant of this buffer that would be necessary between the residential property and Central Park itself, and making sure that it's heavily vegetated. There's other things that we've talked about for improving the technology use and what is basically specified for the project, including speaker systems and directional lighting, to make sure that there's no bleeding out into the community, but it's all focused on the pool space itself. Next, Jeff is going to dive into some of the details of the pool.
Thank you. So focusing in on the swimming pool concept plan itself, again, we have the parking lot on the south, so as you would enter, the experience would be you park in this parking lot and you would enter the facility, this building through a corridor, past the admissions desk, and then immediately onto the deck and be adjacent to a leisure pool that would have zero-depth entry with water gradually sloping down to three to three and a half foot deep. And in the backside of this leisure pool has the pair of water slides with this plunge area that collects the riders. Off to the side, we have the current channel where the water constantly moves in the circular motion and the current. And we have a bench here in the zero-depth entry with a shade over it for parents with small toddlers. Just adjacent to the leisure pool on a wet deck, we have interactive play structure that has a dumping bucket with water and some sprays on it. And all of this is at the level with, connected to the building with the bathrooms and the concession stand. Next, moving up the hill, we have a separate lap pool that has six short course lanes with deep water on one end and diving basin. So that is the concept plan, and again, it's tucked in. We have, these are the residential neighbors, and then we have the easement here, large green space along the aquatic center or the swimming pool there. Bruce with RDG did some renderings to give a better look or better idea of what it would look like when it's completed. This is a perspective looking down on the entry of the swimming pool and what the building might look like. Again, parking lot is here, you would enter the facility through the corridor and walk past an admissions counter. This is on the opposite side, looking down to show you the, again, the backside of the building with the concession area, and then the leisure pool on that lower level with the zero-depth entry, the interactive play structure, the current channel, and the water slides. And then up the hill, slightly up the hill, is the lap pool. This is a perspective as you walk in just past the admissions counter, what you would see overlooking the leisure pool. This is as you would be sitting under the shade structure at the concession stand, again overlooking the leisure pool. And then with the concerns expressed by the adjacent neighbors, Bruce did a perspective looking from basically the backyard of the closest neighbor to this facility that's standing on their back deck overlooking the facility. As you can see, the intent would be to provide, some of these trees are there now, so there is a natural buffer, and it would be supplemented with additional landscape and buffer to soften So all in all, with, again, with the water surface, we targeted 8,500 square foot. This concept is about 8,550 and includes these amenities that I described, including the parking lot directly against it and the landscaping buffer. We estimate this to be a $6.7 million project. And that's a project cost all in, including construction plus the related projects cost that go with it. One question that came up during the process is, what if we reduce the cost of the project slightly? So some ideas or options we had were to, we could remove this interactive play structure and replace it with sprays on a wet deck. We could reduce the six lanes, lap, from the lap pool down to four lanes. We could remove things like we had underwater lights for the potential of night events. And then we had two restrooms on the outside of the building serving the general park. So if we remove those items, we estimate that we'd be down to approximately $6 million project cost. So beyond the capital cost, it's also important for us and for you to realize the operation, potential operation expenses, and Lauren had put those together.
So as Jeff just mentioned, you have two different sets of costs. You have your capital costs, and then you have your operating costs. And those are going to be the costs that are associated with what does it take to keep this thing running, to have it open? So I looked at costs in two different ways. The first way I looked at the cost was to look at benchmark facilities, again, facilities similar to the new La Vista swimming pool, what were the expenditures, revenues, population, facility size, and attributed those data points to the new swimming pool to come up with what are projected revenues and expenditures for your new facility. That was the first level of analysis, to come up with some number. The second phase was actually developing a detailed budget for La Vista, going much more in-depth, more like a business, a preliminary business plan for the new swimming pool, including hours of operation, days of operation, staffing plans, programs, program schedule for those types of activities, participation numbers and levels for those different activities. So we call that a detailed budget breakdown. And that was the second level of analysis we did, to come up with what could we project or what would we project your new operating budgets to be. So before I give you those numbers, I just want to quickly walk through how we present them. We present both revenues and expenditures as a range, and we look at both the benchmarking data that we completed in addition to the detailed budget we put together for you. So up on the screen and again on the packet in front of you, I just marked down how we came up with the numbers and the range. So for the new La Vista swimming pool, we project expenditures to be in the range of 159,000 to 224,000. That's rounding up with revenues between 119,000 and 133,000, with a cost recovery range of 60 to 85%. With that, looking at all that data, we projected an attendance number between 22,500 and just under 33,000. So with that, this is the conclusion of the formal material that we have for you today. Our team is going to open it up for questions, comments, feedback from mayor, council members at this time.
My first question would be going back to that slide, looking forward to this. So your revenue projections, are they based off of what you do? So your revenue projections, have they based off of the two or three?
We don't look at it necessarily, I'm going to go back one more slide. We don't look at it necessarily number for number, revenue versus expenditure. Expenditures are relatively stagnant. So, right, so we don't base revenues directly off of expenditures. They do play off of each other, but we do not take the one nineteen and attribute that directly to a hundred and fifty-nine. That one nineteen can fall in the range of one fifty-nine to two twenty-three. The main variable when it comes to revenue is actually that personnel line item. And that is, that is the predominant variable when it comes to your expenditures ranging here, here in this range.
Lauren, I have a question. This document that we were sent, it shows the detail breakdown we talked about, the benchmark that you. There's a fairly large disparity between what's projected for our versus the benchmark. I think I understood you saying part of that is the details, your specific getting down to the details of what we would do versus the benchmark. It's a, it's a big difference though. Can you help me on the other?
Sure. So each facility, whether it's your neighbor, to any of your market facilities or across the nation, each facility is going to operate a little bit differently. So some of the key items that really come into play when it comes to expenditures, predominantly the personnel line is going to be the hours in which you are open, the quantity of hours, the number of days you are open. How conservative you are in staffing and safety measures. And that, that is a key element right there. Facilities similar to yours may staff more people or may staff less. That comes down to operating and safety decisions that the city will make when it comes to operating. And also training curriculums. That's another level of personnel expenditure that we have to take into account. So your swimming pool, we did go conservative, worst case scenario to come up with your number. Whereas your benchmark facilities, they may just operate fundamentally very differently than how we did, worked up your worst case scenario. So it could be fewer days. It could be they have fewer personnel. It could be that their, their training curriculum is different than what you may be looking at. They may not be open as, as long into what is called an adapted season or those days that may come after school starting. So all those different variables play into, into that expenditure line changing. But, but again, I want to shed light on the personnel line. That's where there is the most variable. And one other thing, if you don't mind, I'd like to tack on. Some of the benchmark facilities did not have a pool heater on their pool. For the new La Vista swimming pool, we did, we do have a utility expense for, for the gas to heat the pool that may not be present in your benchmark facilities. And that is a considerable or significant utility cost that's reflected in your expenditure.
What is the occupancy side of the facility? How many people can be there here at the time?
Sure. So again, that is a range right now. There are several factors that will come into play, but we're, we're projecting six to eight hundred as a maximum occupancy at the new swimming pool.
How many cars usually on the ad porch would visit? And we don't have a specific parking order here at this time. My concern would be that the overflow parking would make a deal on the neighborhoods and residents' houses. Having those people walk in, in their, in the vicinity of those people who are, and those kind of problems we can maybe. What, what the city plan would be, does that, are we going to have an alternate parking if necessary for parking levels?
I'm going to hand it over to Jeff to talk about the stall count.
Yes, well, I believe we have approximately a hundred parking spots directly connected to the aquatic center. And there are a number of them along that park drive. So, so what we're projecting right now, our sizing is that parking lot is expected to, to meet kind of the standard daily traffic. Now you will have some peak times and we expect that that would extend out to the park drive. And we did talk extensively about concerns about parking if it, on events that might extend beyond that point. We have identified as a committee area, and I think it's directly across the street. What is that, that drive, our street is, not Parkview, but. Yes, Edgewood. And then there's a, there's a space there that we've identified as potential expansion of parking lot if we need it. And I think the overall philosophy or idea was not to, not to overbuild parking from day one, but have a plan in action if it gets to the point where more is needed. There, there are steps that can be taken and areas that can be added.
And the other thing that we've talked about is if it were a really bad problem, we left the tennis courts in there, like thinking that it's a good amenity and we can handle it. That isn't an option. You can look and relook, maybe go somewhere else too. If it was something that we couldn't accommodate in another way.
So the green basement is across the street on that one, would that have been a priority?
We've kicked it around.
I guess one, one more thing is, is that if you need an interim measure, there is a substantial swath or the easement where there is no construction occurring. And I don't know if you would do it or not, but many communities in peak times or certain events, they, they can have staff where they park people in the grass. And you have substantial amount along the park, park drive that you could use as well. If you wanted to avoid people parking in the, next to the houses and in their driveways.
A question, one of the, the drawing you had presentation about, looks like from the deck from one of the houses that are close to the pool. Can you kind of go into a little bit more of it? Because it also looked like the pool itself is kind of cut into that hill. So you talked about noise, finding one of those folks there, standing on the deck there working down the pool. You talk about, you know, like just generally noise of the folks that are attending, you know, that are at the aquatic center, you know, music, those types of things. About how, if I'm one of those two, what would I be hearing? What kind of level those sounds would be at?
Well, I think, and I'll, I'll let Bruce add in as well if he would like. But the intent is to try to buffer that as much as we can with natural landscape. And I, what I think you're going to hear are the kids in the pool. The design or the intended design would be you would not hear, say, music or sound systems. That could be designed directionally so it's not, so it's pointed away from those residential neighbors. So, so you're going to hear, they, you know, may hear or likely will hear kids playing in the swimming pool. So that'd be the primary noise.
And then when you, the slide that you had mentioned, you know, the things that possibly could be taken out to maybe reduce the cost. All the amenities that you guys have listed again, they're, they're pretty nice ones. I just was kind of wondering, you know, as far as with, you know, the lights. Maybe this is a question for Scott too, but I mean, were we kind of thinking that we would have like night party? Like people could run out the facility at night to use the parties? And then with the restrooms on the outside, is that more of just an additional amenity to the park itself, provides more restrooms? Because it looked like we were going to upgrade those shelters. And I know there's, are some restrooms that are kind of close to that current shelter. So the additional restrooms, that would just be an additional.
Thinking of would be to get rid of those restrooms that are currently there. They're not really good.
Same old, yeah.
Obviously a lot of the restaurants in the park could still really serve that area or the, the tennis court area where the, the hotel area should have that available. I'll let you talk about.
Sure, sure. Mayor, Council, Scott Stopek, Recreation Director, yes, Council Member Frederick. To answer your question on the lights, we proposed putting those in so we could have additional programming in the evening for not only the regular participants at the pool, but also private parties for additional revenue sources. The restrooms on the outside were programmed in to be twofold, to help with the pools participant users. And then also to accommodate the park users and also increase the restrooms that are already on site and utilize the existing facility. So it could kind of be a two for one.
And then so when you guys talked about like potential daily attendance, the numbers that engaged. Scott, what does that look like then as far as staff? Have you guys even thought about with the, with the pool being kind of expanded to what we currently have staffed or registered? How many more staff would you guys think that it would take to kind of manage?
Like Lauren mentioned, when she went over the revenue and expend, revenue and expense expenditures, we programmed it, programmed all of that in. I can go over it with you at a different time, but as far as specific numbers, it's, it's like in the, you know, eighteen to, around that eighteen to twenty range for staff at any given time. But we, we did look at it very extensively and came up with a very highly detailed plan on what the costs were going to be.
Sorry, one last one. So with the lap pool, I don't know, what's your, what's your typical, how many, how many lanes does a lap pool usually have? If you would reduce that, is that odd or is that, you know? But guess what's the standard for like a lap?
Well, standard starting point for a lap pool would be six lanes if you have a swim program. So if you have a summer competitive swim program, that's the typical starting point. So there are typically six lanes to eight lanes. And then actual lap swimming itself, if you don't have that program, a lot of facilities will have, say, a four lane, which is what we, what, you know, is the fallback that we have proposed here. And that allows space for lap exercise, swimming, those kind of programs. But you also, you have the, while the lap lanes are configured and have specific use, it's also area that's three, three and a half foot deep water where just kids play. So it does serve that purpose as well. So, so you could reduce the program, but you're also reducing some space for kids just to play and swim.
So with the mountain, you could potentially, you could host potentially.
You could.
Those tournaments, those types of things where this.
You could. This is by no means is this a high-end competitive facility, but you could have a nice summer swim program and have hosts meet or two in this pool.
Thank you very much for the information.
You're welcome.
Have you got any facilities that you recently designed with a hundred and fifty mile area? Or is it, would be similar to this?
Similar to that one. Let me, can I put a list together and send that to you? Perhaps.
I just need one, whatever one's a host.
Yes.
You can go out a hundred and fifty miles of walking.
Okay. Well, Sue's Center is one. I'm trying to think of, we do a lot of them in various configurations, single pool.
I think that's all right.
Okay. I will, I will provide a list that you can, you can go visit and, and perhaps even go online and see pictures and see an operation too.
If you were maybe these two sites are places, is there any difference between the scrubbing process from west side of eighty-fourth or where you landed out?
I think in the, the west side of eighty-fourth and where the current, current pool is. We'd actually, we've been helping you for a number of years on this. And I think the last plan we did was quite a few years ago, but there was a considerable expense building at that location as well. And I think it, believe it had to do with access into it and having access roads to get to it and fitting it in the site. So that other site had a considerable site cost that was involved with this. This site also has some, has a similar site cost because it's built into kind of a hillside. And where that makes a really nice pleasant backdrop and a nice aquatic center. It does add cost to the, to construction as well.
My theory would be that if you took up a ballpark on the other side, you would also pass streets and give you access to different locations that are already there, don't get them.
I, I remember there being considerable costs over there, but, but as a follow-up, we'd be glad to kind of do that, do that, do a comparison, follow up with that.
But secondly, the amenities that we're saying, is there any, any additional costs or risk management liability on these things?
I'm not, I'm not aware of there would be additional costs from a liability or risk management perspective. There is, each feature comes with a cost that impacts staffing and management. So, so all of the features and amenities impact that. But I'm not aware of any, anything that impacts, say, insurance or risk management costs. You're welcome. Thank you.
So one other question for the screening of the trees. Is there a possibility that if it's built into the hill, you, some of those huge ones you walk, they use like highway or something like that?
Yeah, so part of it with, with it being built into the hill, there's a kind of a series of terraces to gentle that slope and not make it a big, you know, twenty-foot wall or something that's right next to the pool. So with that, we're able to pair the physical wall with vegetation to help buffer that and bounce the sound up and out rather than towards the neighborhood. But we talked about this quite a bit and even talking about sound walls. But really that starts to inhibit the park experience more than a vegetated buffer. That feels much more appropriate for the space. Thanks.
And the recruiter questions, my councilor, we take that. Well, now can you discuss other comments? Okay, thank you. At this time, if anyone wants to come forward to address the council office. Again, please state your name and your address. And if you could keep your comments clear in this or else we leave with you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mary Medley. I live at seven, seven, two, five Parkview Boulevard. I could have purchased a house in Ralston that was across the street from a swimming pool in nineteen ninety-five. I chose not because all of these, all of the houses during the summertime. I purchased this house for quietness. I have done, have you done a survey on whether or not our property value would go up with the pool put into Central Park? Have you done a survey in the increase in traffic affecting our community? Parkview Boulevard is a very busy street with numerous cars running into back, into the back end of parked cars. I have seen three cars that have driven on front yards with their vehicles right outside my house, across the street. Two of them have went on my yard. I have recently known of two cars heading, recently known two cars hit houses and three cars hitting fence lines. One was on the corner of Edgewood and Giles. One was right across from the football field up at Junior High, took out some fences on Edgewood. And one took out a fence line that was right by the park where the flagpoles are. Two kids have been hit by cars on Parkview Boulevard that I've known of since I've lived there in ninety-five. My son was riding his bike on a sidewalk coming down the hill on Parkview Boulevard and was hit by a car pulling into a driveway. The cars, the park, I'm sorry, the park is not entirely safe. A kid was shooting at barrels in the park. A guy committed suicide in our park. And there have many other incidents that were reported to police and many that have not been reported. There was a sex offender in our community for years that went unnoticed. It start, he would visit his father and that was in the seventies and he was convicted and he's in the pen in Tecumseh. And that was in two thousand and eighteen. So you're talking about a small community. And when we purchased our homes, we purchased them because of the park, the quiet. Is there going to be lights on the pool all night long? If so, how are you going to keep Central Park lights from not bothering neighbors? How are you going to keep kids out of the pool at night? How are you going to keep kids from cutting through the properties to and from the pool? Cause they cut through our properties already. And, um, if you're talking about, they were saying the estimate of six hundred, eight hundred people visiting the pool, that's gonna be a lot of noise. And I brought, bought my property for no noise. And a lot of the other people that bought their properties was because of the park and the quietness. So I just feel it's very unfair that you're subjecting us to this. Um, there is other choices and you need to find the right choice. This is the wrong choice. It's unfair that you're doing this to people that have put their money into their homes. And of course, our property value will go down because of this. And how do you know you build this, people are going to come to it? They got the landing over in Papillion. They paid, they paid for that with, um, a half cent, um, sales tax for that. Mayor Andy paid for all these thing, all these items that before he quit as a mayor through Keno. And I think it's pretty bad to, you know, put the money out there and how do you know that the kids are gonna come? You got kids, I, I drive by, um, the junior high and see all the cars backed up and going and getting free lunches and stuff. So I just don't think it's, people don't have the money for it. And there's a family right across the street that have four children and they're, they're not gonna use the pool. You know, so just saying you're not gonna get it.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Bob McElmore, live, live at seventy-seven eleven Parkview. And, um, the only question I really had, which is pretty much answered, is that the, uh, tennis courts are used about nine months out of the year. And the pool is used probably two and a half months out of the year. And so it would seem really bad to take away the tennis courts, apparently now they're gonna be there, because the junior high uses them for teaching tennis to their kids. So that would be good. The question I would have about the pool is, um, they kind of answered it tonight, but why didn't you use the sports complex? It's big, it's flat, it's not in anybody's backyard, and I thought it would be a better place. But you pretty much answered the question about why it's, why you wanna have it where it is. So at least you're gonna keep the tennis courts.
Do the plan that everybody is wanting during the pandemic, that's better.
My name is Anne White and I live at seventy-six, twenty-two Parkview Boulevard. Uh, I live right in the middle of three schools. The traffic for nine months out of the year is tremendous. Uh, to add a swimming pool to that area, I, I just think is awful. Uh, I know they need a new swimming pool. They don't last sixty years without a lot of problem, but I think they are way out of line on the kind of swimming pool that they're gonna build. We've got big parks to the south, we got them to the, over on Q Street, we got them in Omaha. Why compete with these people? We need just a city swimming pool. We need one that La Vista can afford. We don't need something like Ralston stuck with, with their, with their civic center. We can't afford this. We all have big ideas, but we can't afford it. And the traffic in that area, it's a beautiful park. La Vi- that's a good point for La Vista. It is not central La Vista. It's way east. It's not central at all. So to use that for a reason to bring it down there, the eighty-fourth street area is more central. It still isn't central, but it's closer to it. But they could just put a new everyday city swimming pool up there. They don't need all this fancy stuff. People don't walk to swimming pools anymore. They drive. And they're not going to, they'll drive five miles to the south or five miles to the north. It doesn't make any difference. They'll drive a hundred and fifty miles if they want to, but it's not. But La Vista needs a new just plain swimming pool. But I really am glad they're gonna keep the tennis courts there because I watch kids out there playing tennis from early in the morning till late at night all summer long. And it is used. The park area is tremendously used with people walking through, where they have a, it's cut down this year, but they've had all kinds of parties and different things in the park. Uh, it's well utilized. It's a beautiful park. And people are not gonna go up on top of the hill to have a picnic with no shade and it will take years to re-put in those trees. So in mean, but you can't go have a picnic in the shade, without shade. So it takes years for those things to build. But that's it.
Thank you.
Well, it's stuck. In case I spit. Thank you.
Hello, Cindy Norris. Longtime resident and I live at eighty-two oh eight South Eighty-seventh Plaza in the Point Apartments. The reason for me to, um, address the council is I totally disagree with your site to build this pool. For all the reasons listed, they're just too numerous for me. The pool shouldn't be in that location. I would like to see, I have a couple places that I would recommend that you consider again. Um, your long-term plan is to do away with Kelly East and Kelly West ballfields, I assume for your big events. Go ahead and build the pool there. Move it to the west. Have the pool itself on the west edge of that property. And then the bathhouse to the east, facing to the east, facing eighty-fourth street. Then you'd have like two acres of parking lot. You could have your special events. Because for this, um, salute to summer, that doesn't, that starts before the pool opens anyway. So if you're gonna consider that, you know, use, utilize that space for that. And then, um, having the outdoor, or, excuse me, the restrooms available. Then you would have restrooms available to, for whatever event you're gonna have. Um, that's my recommendation because the existing pool, you know, filled with dirt, plowed in, whatever. It's, it's of no use. Um, my second recommendation would be the property by the Metropolitan Community College. There's acres. There's some engineering maybe because there's, there's a drainage way through there, but there is a lot of land and the property owners there. If the pool itself was built on the east side of that, then it would butt up against apartment complex. And then to the, um, south would be the school. So you would just have, parking would be your buffer for the residents of that area. Um, and like I say, these, these other two locations, well, getting back to utilizing Kelly Fields. Those property owners are used to having noise. They're used to having the pool. They're used to it. They don't care if the pool is relocated within that acreage, acres. So I would, I would recommend, um, those two sites versus Central Park. I just, for obvious reasons, Central Park is not a good choice, in my opinion. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, I had one other thing. The, the school populations for the elementary schools, um, Parkview Heights and Portal, their census outweighs the census of G. Stanley Hall and La Vista West. There's, there are like a hundred and eighty, eighty more kids enrolled in those two schools to the west than the ones to the east street. Your youth population is moving to the west. I think that's it. I'm glad to see everyone doing well, by the way.
Uh, my name's Nick Baker and I live at one zero zero seven two Quail Ridge Drive. Uh, and I just wanna say that, um, you know, location aside, I'm really happy that this kind of facility is something that the city of La Vista is looking at, um, building. As a person who's been involved in aquatics in our community for the last ten years, I know that there's a demand for something like this. And I think that the, um, design that we were shown tonight really does a great job of covering all the bases of, um, what a, what an aquatics facility should have in order to make your community happy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm, uh, Alex Lazo. I live at seven, nine, three, zero Cottonwood Avenue. I'm a bit new to something like this, so I apologize if I mix my words. Um, I just have two points to make, primarily, uh, with the events and the carnivals and concerts and different things of that nature. Um, the points were made that you can have some events in the previous location that you can't have at Central Park. And then vice versa, there's things that you can do at Central Park that you wouldn't be able to do at this, uh, at the previous location here. So by putting in this pool and by tearing up all this ground, uh, when we already have a location for a community pool, it just seems a little excessive to me to make that trade-off of putting all these new, putting all this new stuff here and tearing up all this old nature when we could have it at the previous location and work around the, uh, temporary hiccups that I've been, uh, hearing tonight. Uh, the other thing I think is quite obvious, um, with the advent of the current events and COVID-nineteen, I think, uh, there's no easier way, uh, COVID-nineteen being a respiratory virus that spreads through the, uh, primarily through the mouth and the nose, there's no easier way for this virus to spread than through a community pool where you're gonna have a confined location with a bunch of people. Uh, in ter- in terms of other events like a concert or a carnival, you can practice social distancing. It's on solid ground. Everybody can wear a mask. When you're in a pool, it's gonna be pretty hard to practice social distancing when you're swimming around and floating around in body of water. And I don't think people are gonna be very keen on wearing a mask in a pool either, or in the entire location itself. So that's my two cents on that. I'm not sure exactly where this virus is gonna go, but obviously we've seen the troughs and the ups and downs and the spikes, so I don't think it's gonna go away anytime soon. And as you can see from what we're doing here tonight, um, social distancing is something that's probably gonna stay for quite a while. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gary Bush. I wasn't originally gonna talk on this particular agenda item, as you probably could guess, but I did. Um, that's an ambitious plan that has been laid out. Six point seven million dollars on a project that was already rejected by the citizens. Don't remember how much that one was being used for. You know me, I don't want new taxes, but maybe a pool is good for our community. The pool that's proposed is good for the people building it and good for the people proposing it. I would ask the people who put together this proposal if they have information from prior, just like Councilperson Crawford asked about stuff that they've done and to see how good their projections actually were. How realistic is one hundred nineteen thousand, one hundred thirty-three thousand in revenue compared to one hundred and fifty-nine thousand to two hundred and twenty-four thousand in expenditures? How realistic have other projects that they've done come to their benchmark cases or their estimations? It's difficult because the citizen, the person at the top of your organizational chart doesn't have any of the information that you have in front of you. So hopefully I can go find it someplace so I can do my own look and analysis at it. Um, the current location is probably the best location. It's probably best to rebuild that pool in its current location. The reason why people think that this is predetermined is because this proposal is exactly like the last proposal in the same location, doing a whole bunch of fun stuff. That's why people think it's a done deal. You didn't go far enough from A. You need to go to probably about L or K to start getting away from where you originally started. I believe there's a preconceived notion of what you want and you're not open to other suggestions. The suggestion of its current location, but moving it to where the ballpark fields are, that's a workable one. You can even do this design if you want to, which I think is excessive. We're a small community. Nineteen pools, didn't say how far that out was, so I assume it's going probably ten miles. We can go, as the other person said, people can travel and they will travel. The corner of, uh, seventy-second and Harrison, there's a splash pad. You go another couple down to, to Q Street, you got an awesome water park. You go south, you've got Papillion, you got Bellevue. There are options. Central Park is not central to La Vista. That has been stated. That's more like Ninety-sixth Street. Let's face it, we've grown east. If we're gonna look for something central to the city, maybe out there is a better spot. In its current location, I don't think you're being ambitious enough maybe. If you worried about having event space in the current location, but you've got a pool in the ground, so you can't, let's do something that's not common in this area and have an indoor pool. And build a facility with an indoor pool that you can then cover if you wanna have an event on it, have a wedding, have something like that there. Yes, it's gonna cost more than six million. It'll be costing the range of twenty, twenty-five, thirty million. But at least you'll be able to use it year-round for swimming if you wanted, or for events, cause you can cover it up. And it'd get better synergy with the city, uh, Central Park, the, I'm sorry, city center. So ambitious, don't think it's needed for this city. As the others have stated, Central Park is not the location that it should be at. Keep it in its general location now, either just rebuild the pool as it exists now, or if you're gonna go more ambitious, let's go really ambitious. We already know you're gonna tip this, so let, let's get a nice pool that's not in this area. Indoor pools, there's not many of them.
Thank you. Senator, most recent council office. I will open it up for your inspection. My name is my council, it's back in the lobby. I think if you can, they don't. Are there other tools that you could apply to the plate? And how their projections actually came into play? Every resident, each family, four women, or whatever. Could I remind you of the listeners, I have a lot of comments.
I like the, I like the entertainment video of the podcast. Considering that this was, is, was, you know, trying to make it more free. No, I didn't make more progress than this. That's four people who construction made it four three in the past, all the other stuff. I think you can see it in the camera, just finding out what not that I got. It's a long road to find. Looks like pause, this, and everything on.
Thank you. Please be welcome. I hear from the listeners.
I mean, we're open to having a negative review of the pool.